Real heavy agenda in front of us today. If I don't get started promptly, I probably won't be done by eight forty-five.
That's a good thing.
Depends on if I call on you or not.
All I need is three.
Two minutes.
Three minutes.
I'll be ready this time.
One minute.
I'm gonna pray for it, so, okay?
Okay, that'll work.
All right. Lord, thank you for this morning, thank you for the sunshine and and thank you, Lord, for those who are here and just just that we can, we can take up business in all seriousness with diligence and and seeking your guidance and your direction, Lord, and and asking you for wisdom, but also be able to just enjoy the company and, and have some maybe little lighthearted discussions from time to time, so that we don't take things so seriously that that we leave out the humanity side of it. Lord, we just love you and we thank you and just ask that you be with us this morning and, and to help us make the best decisions that that we can for Lakewood County, and those will be good decisions if we let you make them for us and guide us and direct us. We just thank you and we praise in your son's name.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right.
Um, yeah. Um, so with the absence of Joe this week, you are only two votes.
All right, watch it out.
Presiding commissioner.
All right.
This is when every stand is eight graders.
Just standing, standing, running.
Table that.
Couldn't get a second.
All right, we have minutes for June, June thirty, Eric, I'll put them in your basket down there. They just, they just came through at the entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, I'll second it to approve the minutes for June thirty. Any further discussions, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. All right, next order of business would be the conflict of interest resolution. Linda can give us a little background on it, but this is a requirement. And I understand that uh, it's blanket now as opposed to individual. Uh, so Linda, if you want to explain that, and I'll read the resolution number, I won't read the resolution. And, uh, then I'll ask for a motion on that.
Through the Missouri Ethics Commission, every office holder has to fill out a personal financial disclosure unless we as a county put a conflict of conflict order or resolution in place for our county. That's what this resolution does. Every other year, it has to be renewed so that the presiding commissioner and our purchasing agent are the two that do it on behalf of monitoring our internal workings, knowing that we are compliant. It just takes everybody out of the ballpark, pulls it down to the two that are given responsibility and we're knowing that the invoices.
The resolution number is twenty twenty-five dash three, and the header is a resolution of Lakewood County, Missouri to establish a procedure to disclose potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain public officials.
I make a motion to approve it.
Okay, I'll second that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of resolution twenty twenty-five-three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all opposed, same sign. Resolution approved.
And I'll get that turned in for the ethics commission.
All right, uh, we will go to general county business. I did not look at the calendar on the bids that we have for a camper and bids for the twenty twelve, uh, shimmy Tahoe. So at this time, I would like to take up, uh, and open those bids. And, uh, so Eric, if you would have to do the honors and, and, uh...
We're gonna do the camper bid.
Oh, come on. Thank you. Remember where you got it.
Camper bid, three six zero one point zero zero.
Okay, we had a bid, uh, and look through that stack, Eric, and just make sure there's no others for the, for the camper.
Wait until we've done, if you want, just...
I just wanna make sure that...
Tahoe.
Okay. All right, so, uh, right now, we have, we have one bid for three thousand six hundred and one dollars um, for the camper.
And what was the high bid, uh, last time?
I... Thirty-one-ish, maybe, something like that.
Three thousand ninety-five.
Three thousand and ninety-five.
Linda's gonna tell us here in a second.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve that bid for three thousand six hundred and one dollars.
I'll second that. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, we have one bid for three thousand six hundred and one dollars per mo- for the motion, the second. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all opposed, same sign. Bid accepted. Just initial that up here.
Thanks, John.
All right, we'll notify that individual. And now, Eric, if you would, uh, open a couple bids.
Okay, I'm going to use this knife while I've got it and give it back to Mr. Rowe before I forget it. All right. Somebody does not want me to get into this.
You need a knife again?
No, no, I've already started ripping.
All right.
We're gonna get it. Bed Tahoe. Three thousand and ninety-nine dollars. Bed for the Tahoe, five thousand. Tahoe seventeen fifty. Tahoe three thousand. Tahoe thirty-five oh one. Tahoe for thousand six hundred and eighty. And Tahoe for five hundred dollars.
Okay, looks like we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And five thousand dollars was the high bid. Looks like the range, the range there, probably in the median point was probably, or if you throw out the the two low ones, you're probably in the
Four thousand.
Four thousand range, so...
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the five thousand dollar bid for the Tahoe.
Okay, uh, I'll second that. Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, all opposed, same signs. Okay, did you have another set of keys, Randy?
I think I have one singular key that fits the ignition. I don't have, I think there's only one fob.
Okay.
Either the fob.
No, no words.
Missing it, I think I don't work.
Yeah.
Missing it.
Okay. All right. All right, so bids, uh, next item of business would be the, uh, SB one ninety, the wrap-up on that after our last meeting, looks like, uh, there's twelve there to approve, to get that closed out.
I'll make a motion to approve the twelve.
I'll second that. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Aye, aye, maybe. All right, so I would just make a comment on that. Uh, watch the, uh, special session here of the Missouri Legislature. I'm not sure, uh, where it's at, but there was, uh, uh, legislation that would, uh, impact, um, uh, Lakewood County and the other counties in the, in, in the state uh, regarding property tax freeze, uh, please send a bill three. It would essentially create three tiers of property tax, uh, here in, uh, the state of Missouri. Uh, I would encourage everyone to look at that and, uh, as we, as we go forward, what we know is Senate Bill one ninety, senior tax freeze. Uh, if some element of Senate Bill three would, would become legislation, uh, some counties in the state of Missouri would put before the voters uh, the ability to freeze all property taxes on homes. Uh, and that's a broad statement, uh, not, not including commercial, uh, to, to freeze that irregardless of the age, so that's an interesting, uh, concept. Of course, the solution is, in my humble opinion, is if everybody would follow the Constitution, Hancock Amendment, none of this would be necessary, so I'm speaking to the general audience that might be watching this on, on YouTube and the investigative reporter that's in the room, uh, so that people can become more informed about the impact of, uh, property taxes and, uh, the, uh, and what that looks like, not only in Lakewood County, but what that looks like throughout the state of Missouri, so I just would encourage everyone that has an interest in that issue to do diligence and, uh, be informed, so... Eric, we're in general county business. Randy, you got anything for us this morning?
Two minutes worth. Tell me when I'm ready. Stop clock on?
No. You're gonna go over.
So, uh, just a little statistic for you. The number one state in the United States of America with the most tornadoes so far this year is, you have a guess?
Missouri.
No.
Uh...
What'd you say?
Kentucky.
No.
It's gonna be back east then somewhere.
Well, typically, you know, tornado alley is Oklahoma. But this year is Texas, okay? With, with a hundred and...
Wichita Falls used to be the...
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. But Missouri is now number two, first time ever. And, and we have had hundred and eleven over F-two tornadoes verified by National Weather Service in Missouri, which is astronomical. You know, we went above Oklahoma, we went above Kansas for the first time. So, you know, that's, uh, that's not a good statistic, but that's a, that's a legitimate statistic. Uh, we were number one on F-two or stronger tornadoes in the United States, which is also not a good statistic. Uh, and, and they've said that we have probably three weeks more of, of risk, risk zone, and then, and then probably will go into our drought. So, that's their forecast, but those are hard statistics. Uh, I don't run out of time. So, tomorrow morning, we're going to test the sirens at ten AM. And we hope we have a hundred percent. Uh, you're welcome to go down to Bennett Springs State Park and hear, hear our success, hopefully. Uh, Jack, I think, is gonna be down there and, uh, and then some of the, uh, contractors, two of the contracting companies will be there, you know, just, just to celebrate, basically. And, uh, and we hope that, we hope we're successful. That's at ten AM. And that's it. Was it too long, was it?
No, I think you did pretty good.
Okay. All right. Now questions? I don't have that frequency yet, but I'll have it tomorrow for you.
Are you done?
Oh, I am, yeah. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for that, uh, update, and, uh, I have confidence that those sirens are gonna work as, as they should tomorrow. So let us shoot us all a text.
I will.
Let us know.
Yeah. I will.
Okay. All right, we're still in general county business. All right, public comments items listed on the agenda. Okay. Let's do routine business then. Eric, do you have a chance to look at the payables?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to get this action done too?
Sure. Okay, Linda's presented a, um, a request for a refund on property taxes. Uh, this came via the, uh, assessor's office where their property was, uh, measured incorrectly, so an adjustment's been made for three tax years, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, for total amount two hundred fifty-nine, uh, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
Do I need a motion for this?
Yes, yeah.
All right. I'll make a motion to give these folks a refund. Two hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty-seven cents.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Refund approved. Okay, Linda, anything else? Okay. All right, um... Eric, any, any, uh, anything in Rogan Bridge out there?
Oh, there's stuff at Rogan Bridge.
All the time?
Yeah.
All right, uh, public comments, uh, items not listed on the agenda. None, okay. Okay, Linda, you had something you wanna bring up, State Tax Commission. This may be kinda dovetail back into my unsolicited comments, but, um... Linda, you can probably explain this, I can, I can not do as good a job as you, if you wanna explain that.
So, this week, I received an order from the State Tax Commission to hold our assessed values from after the Board of Equalization until the fourth Saturday in August. So, um, what that seems to do, what that does do is, in our taxing world, the eleven numbers, which are the numbers that have already been given to us, will be the numbers that will be given to the political subdivisions in order to set their levies. And when the Board of Equalization was done, as we will have hearings in here, those numbers were also sent off to the Tax Commission, and levies could be set on new numbers. What they're saying is, those new numbers will be held to an unknown time intermittently, but no later than the fourth Saturday of August. The MOU that was signed, memorandum of understanding that was signed from our county will be evaluated whether or not the State Tax Commission gives approval to the amount of increases that was implemented in our county. And if they give approval for that, then I am suspecting they will go ahead and clear our county of the new numbers. And if they don't give approval to the amount of increases, then that will present some choice and decisions potentially on both parties. There are counties out there that have not signed a MOU. I do know that. They didn't participate in this action that the State Tax Commission was doing. And it would seem like both are kind of rising a little bit, both sides are kind of rising a little bit on this action. More to come.
Which I think, you know, just, I don't know whether to add to the comments, or it, it may be redundant comments, but, um, to the inconsistency within the state of Missouri regarding property tax, um, values slash assessments. And so, uh, you have the State Tax Commission that, um, is issuing directives in compliance letters to, uh, assessors statewide. You have some assessors that are refusing to cooperate. You have other assessors that are cooperating, um, to, uh, fulfill their obligations. And now you have the legislature, uh, intervening and setting up what appears to me three classes of, of counties in the state of Missouri. Uh, Lakewood County being one of seventeen, I believe currently, that would not have a, a tax freeze in place. There would be twenty-two counties, I believe, that would have, uh, the ability to, uh, uh, have no cap in place. And then there's a hundred and seventeen, and I need to look at these numbers, I believe there's a hundred and seventeen, that they would be able to, uh, have a freeze in place not to exceed a five percent in- increase. Um, it's, it's very interesting, those dynamics. Uh, all those would have to, i- i- the, the proposed legislation, it shall be uh, on the April or the municipal ballot in twenty twenty-six for those counties that, uh, would be able to enact the freeze. Lakewood County's one that we wouldn't be able to. Now, here's the dynamic that, that I see. Uh, if this goes through and it's not contested, and it becomes law, and you fast forward five or ten years down the road, you have counties like ours that can continually see the increases uh, if they exist. Uh, hopefully, that would be offset by levy rollbacks uh, per the Constitution and the Hancock Amendment. But if not, and our taxes would continue to increase, and then you have a county like Howe County that if their voters impose the freeze, and then ten years down the road, you're looking at where you might want to locate based upon, um, the cost of, of living, and one of those costs might be your property tax. It could create a real imbalance here. Uh, so I would just caution the legislature to rethink this, as if they're going to ask me and come up with a better path forward so that it's consistent, uh, statewide. Because I can see a point where a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home in Lakewood County is going to be, uh, assessed and levied at a, at a disproportionate rate compared to a two hundred fifty thousand dollar home in Howe County. Might not happen over a year, but it might happen over a five or ten-year period. And so, um, all that speculation on my part, uh, I just find it, um, both interesting and also, um, probably inequitable. And that may be, uh, what would result in some type of legal challenge at some point. But, uh, gosh, I just don't know where this is coming from. Um, and if we have something in place in the Constitution, then why would we not follow that and not create additional, uh, division within the, within the state, so that's my, that's my comments on this. So, as it pertains back to the State Tax Commission, whenever we come in here at BOE, uh, you know, we're gonna hear appeals from, uh, residents about their, about their values and and, uh, we will hear those appeals and we'll fulfill our, our duty. Uh, but it really makes you wonder, um, what it looks like in, in one county and, and, and neighboring counties around the state. Do we wanna be, uh, this Lakewood County want to be a, uh, you know, provide amenities and services? Uh, absolutely we do, but do we wanna be one of the higher, uh, possibly one of the counties that has a greater tax burden, you know, working this senior tax, uh, table out there and, and you have individuals come in that, um, you know, you sense some of them are struggling. I mean, there is a reason why that, uh, twenty-five hundred people plus uh, submitted applications to have their property taxes frozen. And, uh, so, it's gonna be interesting.
The warning that the M. M. U. made before was that if they didn't, if the State Tax Commission didn't approve, that they would set unilaterally the assessed value onto your county. Which I think is where it's going to, on some of them. It would no doubt occur, that's what they said they would do, so no doubt it would occur. And then that would present either a county that would, even including ours, it was negotiated. So whether or not that still stands, and they determine a new assessed value... So whether or not that still stands and they determine a new assessed value at that point before the tax statements go out, whether the county accepts, any county accepts that new value or whether they decline that new value would then be, that would create the, the conflict at that point.
I'm sure there's a lot of eyes on this right now from different sectors. Okay, other business, nothing in general county business, any other business?
Could I ask, uh, some questions about the State Tax Commission? So, uh, was the MOU the county signed, was that for residential assessed values or was that also for commercial assessed values to be raised?
I understand it was every...
Or it was every, except agriculture?
I will, I will take a stab at that. Uh, I know as a residential property owner and a commercial property owner, I received reassessment notices in both of those classifications. And we had Agland, I believe, also received some, uh, increase as well, yeah.
The county role, it's, seems pretty overreaching, don't it?
Gotcha. And then, Linda, you said that the pre-Board of Equalization numbers were looking like eleven percent increase?
No, no, those are called the Form eleven numbers.
Okay.
So, it's a reporting mechanism called the Form eleven, that the county clerk's office takes the assessor's numbers at that time, at the end of May, and reports them back to the state. And we begin to, begin the process of the auditor's office creating pro formas, another form name, but the beginning point of how levies begin their journey. They send those pro formas back to us, we send them out to the ta- the political subdivisions. The tax hearings began to happen on each of those subdivisions and then, as they're approved, signed off of, they come back to us and we send them back to the auditor's office. The auditor's office agrees, has questions to the, with the subdivisions, again, if they've got any questions, they call them. And then it comes back to us, certified, when it comes back to us certified, then we keep them, and that is the levy set that is then turned over to the collector's office to begin on their tax statements. What this has done is, is if there was any amending, which there is typically through the year, because after BOE, there's gonna be some potential changes. What it does for us is in process, we won't be making those changes for the sake of this year's levies, because it's too, you gotta have levies September first. You can't wait until the day before.
Right.
So we are in our process using these May-ending numbers, Form eleven numbers, and letting the rest of this run its course, and adjustments will be made next year. There is a method already established at the auditor's office, because you can use any number, either one of those numbers in authorization by the auditor's office, you can use either number. So, we will use those eleven numbers, we will make those amendments next year, whatever plus or minus, and then we'll recalculate them in next year's levy.
Okay, so the amendments that would've taken place this year would potentially take place next year instead?
Yes, yes. It'll just be rolled forward. That's how the order affects my office. We have a timeframe now, different than we did before.
Gotcha. And that's all I had?
Okay.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.